Good evening, call this meeting of the Carersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for invocation and pledge.
If you'll join me in prayer. Our dear heavenly father, we appreciate this beautiful weather in the middle of July. We ask you to touch the hearts of those who need it. Lead and guide this council in all that we do. All this we ask in the holy and precious name.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeler, the roll please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 10.
Here.
Thank you Connie, the gang is all here. We have a first order of business. We actually have minutes from two council meetings to approve. And council, you've had both of these well in advance tonight. One from our July 1st meeting and one from our July 14th special called meeting on Monday. And if you have had a chance to review both of those, then the chair will entertain a motion to approve both of those council meeting minutes.
Mayor, do we do that with one motion?
We can.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We do have with us a couple of guests tonight from the Carersville school system. I'll call on Dr. Howard Heinsley to come up and make introductions.
Mayor Santini, council members, Mr. Groga, thank you for letting me briefly impose on your agenda. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce the new principal of Carersville High School. But before I do that, I want to express my sincere appreciation for your ongoing support of our school system. We enjoy a tremendous relationship and we greatly appreciate that. And I particularly want to point out your support of the law enforcement officer that has been serving as traffic capacity as well as helping out at the elementary and primary school. We appreciate your support of that. Mark Fuerbach is not only becoming the principal of Carersville High School, he has moved to Carersville. He has a lovely wife and two children that will be attending in Carersville public schools. Mark is from Fort Lauderdale, Florida. He graduated from the University of Florida. He's leaving here tonight to go defend the first three chapters of his dissertation at Valdosta State tomorrow. Hopefully about the end of this year, he will complete that degree. He's been working in Gordon County. He has five years' teaching experience, two years as an assistant principal at the high school, three years as a middle school principal, and one year as an elementary principal. He's seen it all. His goal one day is to be a superintendent. He's going to be a tremendous asset to our community, he's going to do a great job at Carersville High School. And I appreciate you again letting me introduce him. This is Mark Fuerbach, principal of Carersville High School.
Thanks for being here. Care to say anything?
I do.
Good.
It'll be about five seconds, but I met y'all earlier today. And as Dr. Heinsley said, we moved about two weeks ago and definitely getting adjusted. I have two small children and a beautiful wife, in my opinion, and we're just excited to be here. We've lived in Gordon County for the past 11 years and, you know, we made this move. We wanted to make it, you know, home. And we're just excited to be here, part of the school system, a part of the community too. So I just wanted to thank you and, you know, let you know how excited I am to be here.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Y'all are welcome to hang out with us for a while. Lyndy might learn something. I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just kidding. Appreciate y'all being here. Yes, tell us here you said happy birthday. We have a series of first readings of different requests tonight. The first is case AZ 14-03 zoning and annexation request. Mr. Manino.
Thank you mayor and council. The first two cases are both dealing with the same development. First one AZ 14-03 is annexation and a zoning. This one actually is part of approximately 50 acre shopping center proposed on Main Street. To the rear of the development, there's a three acre parcel. That's what this request is about. It's not about the remaining 50 acres. To the rear of the parcel, the property is still in the county jurisdiction. There was going to be some issues in permitting the land development, dealing with two different jurisdictions, dealing with the county and the city on that. It felt like it was going to be a lot easier if we had it all in one jurisdiction. The county has also reviewed the annexation request and had no objection to the request based on the letter that should have been included in your packet. With that, the request was based on a review of exercise of zoning powers as well as well of it being reviewed by the city departments that deal with the development process. And with that, Planning Commission recommended approval of this annexation and zoning of this 3.6 acre tract to the rear of the proposed development.
Okay. Any questions for Randy at this point?
Here, I've got a question. Randy, in our notes, it said would only be used for grading and drainage per application.
Well, in the back, in the back of it, there are no structures on that particular part. They've got the detention facility in the rear, so...
But I guess my question is, could that be developed at some point? I mean, this application is for grading and drainage, but is that a developable site?
The portion in the back, well, it's going to be utilized, like I said, for the grading and detention facility for part of this development. Now, putting a building and structure on it, no. Not with the MN zoning because they're requesting, it's currently zoned mining in the county and it's going to remain with the city's mining zoning in the rear.
I understood that, but I mean...
Could someday that...
Someday, could, is with another application, could that be a building site?
They would have to rezone the property to put a commercial development on it. Commercial development is not allowed on mining property.
See, I can't visualize that grading back in there because...
My understanding is I think they were probably looking at using that more for detention down the road, but they reduce all their problems.
Detention facility right back here.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Randy at this point? Thank you sir. I'll open up a public hearing relative to case AZ 14-03. Public hearing relative to the annexation portion of this request. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time.
I'm the applicant, so I didn't know if I spoke now or after, so David...
You can speak now, your name and your address for our clerk.
Yes, David Buckle, 3680 Pleasant Hill Road, Duluth, Georgia. We are the civil consultant on the project. And Randy kind of touched on it. The whole reason is to not be in two jurisdictions for the land disturbance permit. We did talk to the county engineer and he agreed that it would be better to be all this in the city. So, in the back, there's significant grade relief on this site, so there's probably a 40-foot-high cut slope and field slope in the rear, so it would not be developed for anything but grading and detention in the rear. So, it'll support the shopping center.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Again, this is public hearing for the annexation portion of the request AZ 14-03. Anybody else care to speak for or against at this time? I'll close the public hearing for the annexation portion. I'll open up a hearing for the zoning portion of this request. Once again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close that public hearing and council will take this up for final consideration at our first meeting. That's going to be August 7th, if memory serves me correctly. And we'll move on to the next case that is kind of tied in with this. It's file Z 14-03.
Thank you again mayor and council. As you had noted, it is part of the same shopping center and development. Additional 1.94 acres located right here is going to be added. It's currently zoned mining and it's going to be added to the, as part of an out parcel along the front edge, along East Main Street as part of the overall development. With that, we need to bring it into the same zoning category as the rest of the main shopping center. The request is to rezone it to general commercial with the Main Street overlay district. And as with the other case, it was reviewed by the individual departments from the city that reviewed the zoning application. There appeared to be no objections from them and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this point? Thank you sir. And I'll open up a public hearing relative to case Z 14-03. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time. You drove all this way, you may as well talk, right?
And just for clarification, the reason we are rezoning that small portion is because there is a 36-inch water line that kind of bisects through the site and there's some serious slopes, so to make it a usable lot is the reason we're adding just that small portion, so that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else relative to case Z 14-03? And seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. Again, council, we'll take this up for final consideration at our meeting on August 7th. We'll move on to file SU 14-02.
Thank you again mayor and council. This is a special use request to allow an expansion of a non-conforming use. We're speaking of the Moore's Market Restaurant located on Fight Street is looking to expand a parking lot. They own the home adjacent to it. They're currently utilizing the driveway to that home for parking. The request is, they're looking to demolish the actual home on that and configure a parking lot that would serve their particular restaurant. The reason it's coming before use is because the existing restaurant is in the R7 zoning category. It's grandfathered more or less, or it's in a non-conforming use in the R7 and our ordinance requires it go before the Planning Commission and city council if you are to expand a non-conforming use. With that, our individual departments that review the applications have reviewed it. Additionally, Planning Commission heard this and does recommend it for your approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments at this time for Mr. Manino? Thank you sir. I'll open up a public hearing relative to SU 14-02. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time. Thank you sir.
My name is Jim Mock. I live at 217 West Cherokee and I've been asked by Courtney to answer any questions since I was the one who did this very tasteful, exquisite schematic drawing here. But I did want to let you know that this will provide 16 additional spaces for Courtney. It's less than 5,000 square feet of paving area once the house is removed. And it's a one-way, one-way in and one-way out. And the out goes onto Walker Street, which would be a little less congested than the way it is now. Also, there's been a problem with parking for Rotary Park, which is just a few doors down from this, and Courtney has agreed to allow people to park there so they wouldn't have to park on the street.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Jim?
Thank you sir.
Anybody else wish to speak relative to case 14-02 may do so at this time? Hello?
I am the granddaughter of Emma Templeton, who is the owner of Four Walker Street. We have the adjoining backyard to this restaurant.
And can you give us the address, please?
Four Walker Street.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I knew you said that.
It's on the corner of Fight Street. We have particular concern about the use of this property being turned into a parking lot. It's already a dangerous place as it is because of the volume and the activity that takes place at the restaurant that was grandfathered in because it was a store prior to that. The concern is there's a hazard right now that's still not being addressed by the police department or the city. I've called numerous times because the parking becomes very crowded and very hard for my grandmother to manipulate in her residence that she's been in since 1940. So, that means that I oppose the addition or the transformation from that house to a parking garage for that one reason. And for another reason, it's going to decrease the property value for my grandmother and for myself, who will own that home once she leaves this beautiful earth, and we hope that she doesn't. But I see it as being something that will take away from the quality, especially now that I've heard that it will exit onto Walker Street, which is where our property is. So I do oppose the annexation to this whole, we received notification that we needed to be present to speak on this, so I'm here speaking on behalf of myself and my grandmother in reference to this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I do, I just want you to clarify one thing for me. When you said you had made several calls to the police department, you mean due to the parking issue?
Due to the people parking on the streets, Fight Street, Walker Streets. I've come up and down that street many a times and I can't even see, and I'm a fairly good driver. She's older and needs a little bit more clearance than I do, but for anybody or any children that are on that street, it's very hazardous. And before the store was there, it worked. They weren't open at night, they weren't serving alcohol, you know, wine beverages. We are community-based, there's kids in the community, there's elderly people in the community. It's just not constructive to the environment that you want your house in. I'm sure you guys wouldn't want a parking lot or business next to your home that posed that type of interference with your daily living and daily lives. She has to go around the way, she has to go out of her way, lunchtimes, evenings, to get around traffic. I'm sure she's not the only one. A lot of people on the street don't own that property like we do, but it is a concern and I also think it will take down the value. And I'm having a real estate person come give us an idea of how much that's going to depreciate the value of her home and the future investment that might be in that, so...
So I guess what I'm trying to determine is if, is if the parking lot is approved, which of course we're not doing that tonight, one way or the other, but if it was approved, it would eliminate part of the congestion for your grandmother.
It'll eliminate part of it, but increase it as well because they will be exiting onto Walker Street. So that activity's still going to be there, lunchtime, evening, that activity is going to be there because it's going to be obscure, cars parked right next to her, well-maintained and manicured lawn. So there's a lot of factors in place why we oppose the business. I don't have a problem with the business being there. It was never a problem with the business being there before. I do have a problem with the hours, the element, the distraction. I have a lot of problems with those things in a community such as this, it's a historic community. And like I said, I wouldn't want it next door to my home. I don't like that it's next door to hers now. And whatever we need to do to fight this, we will. But I want to oppose it and make it very clear that we are in opposition for them to take down the houses there and turn it or transform it into a parking garage.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McDaniel?
I'm familiar with that area.
You used to own a house next door.
I used to own the apartment, the house next to you, remember. Are you saying that with the flow of traffic, it exits over on Walker Street at some point?
Well, that's what I just heard. The gentleman here said that that will exit, one-way in, one-way out, which means there will be traffic coming on Walker Street into the residence. And that's something new to me as well.
Here's the restaurant.
So the exit they currently have is on Fight Street and that's the only one-way in and one-way out. Now, if they turn it into a parking garage, which I just came aware of, it's going to exit onto Fight Street. Is that not correct?
Exit onto the wall.
I mean, Walker Street.
That is what the drawing shows, yes.
That's, this is my first.
That's going to be like a horseshoe?
Pardon me?
A horseshoe drive, in and out. They go in on Fight Street and out.
It'll be an L shape, more or less.
Ma'am, have you seen a picture of the drawing of it?
No, I haven't. I wasn't here for the next one.
Randy, I know you just had a...
Is this the drawing you're speaking of?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you had that for reference.
Okay. So the exit will actually be right next door and...
Is there any fencing or structure in between the two property lines?
Right now, there's a chain-linked fence.
Were you picking me?
Anybody, who knows?
Right now, there's a chain-linked fence between the two houses. Drawing shows a solid fence along with a five-foot landscape strip in the vision of the...
So it will obscure our view of Fight Street, which is part of our property.
No, we go all the way down Fight Street. You would have to sit back 20 feet off the road.
There's a picture right there, if you point it out. Show us.
Yeah, right there is presented.
But you're saying the fence down, the fence down is something we can see through. You're saying the fence is...
Yeah, right now, there is a...
But there will be a privacy fence there, um, where exactly the fence is there. So yes, that will obscure our view of the street that we now have clear view access to.
The fence would be required to start 20 feet back off the road right down here. And their plan actually, the plan that they, they do have a copy of their show is an additional landscape strip.
Again, still not sufficient for me and what I see is property, so it's neither here nor there. I still oppose it. It doesn't look good, whether it's a one-way in on Walker Street, one-way in on Fight Street. It's still a lot of activity, it's still a lot of traffic, there's safety concerns. Like I said, they were, when they initially bought the property, it was a store. It turned into a restaurant, which increased, I don't know why they don't just move to a location more suitable to a restaurant. Ray Thacker's place looks like a house. He has businesses on Main Street that you don't even know what's happening over there. We do every day, we have to see it, we view it. I see it every time I come around the corner or try to come see my grandmother. So we have an actual business that's disrupting our, her, and my daily life, so... For that being said, I do not wish to have a parking lot in our backyard or next door, as you can see.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your comments.
Excuse me, can I get your name?
Darian.
Anybody else care to speak relative to case SU 14-2? I need you, certainly, yes, come on up and...
I can understand and I sympathize with her concerns, but I do want to rest assured that the congestion is the problem that's already there. This isn't bringing more people in because the size of the restaurant is not getting any bigger. The problem exists right now and the congestion on the street that is keeping our mother from getting there is exactly what we're trying to alleviate. And I know Ray Thacker has a beautiful home with lots of landscaping and this plan addresses that, has more landscaping. Ray Thacker also has a lot where he has parking across the street, so there hasn't been any problems with Ray's property and we're just trying to be a little more convenient to the residents and the users of the restaurant.
Are you able to, I know there's preliminary drawings and things, can you give any kind of indication about what kind of landscaping that would be providing a buffer between the lot and the house?
Yes. We were planting low trees, something that would, like a crepe myrtle. There's power lines across there, so we don't want to plant a tall tree to get into the power lines. So we were thinking of a crepe myrtles along the street side and something more, what's the word, non-deciduous, what's the evergreen, you know, that doesn't lose its leaves on, along the fence side?
Like cedar, some kind of cedar.
Yes. Lelands, although they have some problems, but something that would be tall and green all year round.
Okay. Any other questions, any other comments from you, Mr. Mark?
So making that a parking lot...
If, I just need you to step up to the mic. When you talk, you're welcome to speak.
So making that a parking lot as a financial look is not going to decrease the value of the property for people that are in that area. I don't see the value of a parking lot being to equate to a home that's there that can be resold, increase the value of the property within the community. I understand they want to make it pretty and that's all well and good. Still doesn't help our situation, my investment, my grandparents' investment into that property and the convenience and the disadvantages that it has in and of itself to have cars slamming doors, people exiting, coming and going at all times of the day and night. We deal with that now, but it's in the backyard and because there are businesses that's been grandfathered in, there's only so much you can do. But we can't stop the future growth of that establishment and ask them to look at investing somewhere else. That's a huge investment to lose a house that they have rental property in, when they can invest that into another property somewhere maybe downtown that's lovely, I say downtowns or places that they're rehabbing and annexation for businesses other than coming into a community that's a community base for homeowners and not businesses that run all hours of the day and night. So I understand they want to make it pretty, but it's still not convenient or necessary for the community that we live in. So, again, my opposition. I appreciate the attention that, to detail that they want to make towards making it pretty, but it doesn't help us in our fight. I'll get with the other members of the community to make sure more people are present next time so they can oppose as well. I understand that the council is recommending or supporting the decision.
This is a public hearing together in relation to...
The planning commission did recommend it.
The planning commission recommended, so they're supporting it. And I called prior to this meeting to find out what exactly it was all about prior to being here today, but I'll get the community more involved in it going forward because I understand there's one more hearing on this.
Yes ma'am, we'll have another public hearing similar to this on August 7th.
Okay.
And that'll be, it'll be at 7 o'clock. We'll have another public hearing exactly the same as this. We'll hear from people that want to speak for or against it and then city council will vote and make a determination.
So I need to be contacting my council members in the area to let them know how adamant and supportive I am.
She lives right down the street from you, so...
It's me who's walking, contact.
Thank you for your comments and thanks for being here. Anybody else like to speak relative to SU 14-02? Alright. And again, just for our clerk, your name and your address, please sir.
Roger Fane, I am from out of town.
Roger Fane.
Ask my son. Yeah. Go here, where exactly is the parking lot right here?
No, that's where the restaurant is.
That's the parking lot, I have to...
Oh, I see, I'm turning around, yeah. There are cars coming up right here, from right here. Come here, they don't go all the way in, they go out.
Just out.
Just out, so they go right here, right here, it's like a circle. So they park this way, right?
Yeah.
Have no cars coming right there, they, where's that, they park right on the way to the back of the street, right?
No. They park that way, that parking lot.
Uh, they come out that way, this street's already congested, the cars on both sides all the time. I don't know if you really want to go down this street.
Mr. Fane? I know you're trying to use the visual, maybe we could let you use the laser pointer because the people in the room and the council members can't hear you and we want to hear your comments. So, we've got a laser pointer that Randy could let you use that you can point with that and speak in the microphone for us.
What I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to figure it out, the way out and the way in. So the cars are like this constantly, right? This is the idea. In and out, in and out, in and out.
That's where they go in now, they'll continue to go in that way.
Continuously, continuously, all day, right?
Well, they're not up there all day, but...
They would enter, they would enter on Fight Street and they would exit on Walker Street. That is correct, sir.
Wait, what's your issue with this?
We'll find you with it. Before the hour, because the service is called.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else relative to SU 14-02? Alright, again, I'll close seeing nobody else wanting to step forward. I'll close the public hearing for SU 14-02. Again, council, we'll take this up at our meeting on August 7th and have another public hearing and then we'll have an opportunity to vote on that item. Thank you for the input from everybody that stepped forward. Our next item, Mr. Manino, you have, that's a quit claim deed.
Yes, this is a release of a lien. This is part of the first-time home buyers program, the CHIPS program. The homeowner at 11 Grainger Drive fulfilled the requirement of living in the home for five years, standard typical policy that requested council to release the lien on the property.
Any questions or discussion on this item?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Courier, you have the next item, please.
Thank you mayor and council. The Downtown Development Authority Board and staff would like to establish a festival zone for our first Friday event, which is sponsored by Mellow Mushroom. Will feature kids' activities and various downtown vendors, as well as a concert in Friendship Plaza. We have spoken with all of the necessary department heads and in addition to DDA board and staff, completing a crowd management course as required by the fire marshal. We will have two police officers on staff from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., which is actually an hour longer than what we are requesting that the festival zone be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., where we would have alcohol sales. Mellow Mushroom again is the sponsor of that and we do have insurance that we are working to get with them for additional liability. I have handed you all a resolution. I apologize that was not in your packet, but am requesting that you... I apologize it was not in your packet, but am requesting that you approve the community festival, as well as the festival zone that we are proposing for our August first, first Friday event.
Questions for Tara on this item?
You have to be 21 to move, to enter the area that's marked off by the fence?
You do not have to be 21 to enter. Anyone will be able to enter if you would like to consume alcoholic beverages. We will have two checkpoints. Again, DDA board will be checking IDs. It will be a $5 fee. That individual will get a bright yellow wristband so they can be easily seen and a festival cup. Only those with a yellow wristband and a festival cup will be permitted to consume alcoholic beverages. Additionally, Mellow Mushroom and those that are serving will also be required to check IDs upon purchasing of beverages.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, just to clarify, although, I mean, the statement was made, Mellow Mushroom is sponsoring this, you know, under the ordinance, this is the City of Carterville sanctioned event. Y'all, y'all are actually the sponsor of this event and y'all are allowing the DDA and Mellow Mushroom to act as your agents in respect to it. Just to be clear on that.
Very good. And member of council, there was some verbiage relative to the insurance requirement that should be attached to any motion that may or may not be made.
And I just want to make sure when this, when we talk about this in media outlets, you will pay $5 to drink. If you choose to drink, you don't have to, but it will cost $5. You get a wristband and a cup, at which point your ID is checked. And then every time you choose to actually buy an alcoholic beverage, you will be ID'd again.
That is correct, yes.
Another $5?
Excuse me?
Another $5?
The beverages will cost additional money, yes. But you get a souvenir cup.
Bright green?
It is actually, green.
Any other discussion? If not, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to receipt of the appropriate insurance documents.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tara. Mr. Grove, you have the next item, please. Pretty sure. Referring to referendum resolution for City of Carterville Geo Bond. Sorry, I got a game of words with friends going there, didn't you?
This calls for a recreation referendum on November fourth of 2014. The project list is the same list that was copied to you and it's in the amount of 7.995 million. Issuance cost, the issue would be around 8.2 million. Finance for 10 years with annual payments of somewhere in the 920 to 930 K range. It will take about one mil of tax to support. Any questions relative to legalities on the referendum? We can throw to Keith, of course, Gabe Agins in the back, our financial advisor from Raymond James, and Greg can help with the project list if there's anything there. But that's, that's what this one is. It's been in your goals this year and it's recommended for your approval.
Mayor, question to you or, or someone. Is the project list for this posted on our website yet?
Wouldn't be. You haven't approved it yet.
We haven't, we haven't approved the list yet.
But it would be after tonight if we approve.
Could be. Rebecca says yes.
I would think upon approval in the coming days, certainly the City of Carterville staff, they can provide information. They don't provide any, they provide solid information, they're going to be advocating, taking an active role in advocating for its passage. And so, you know, council, you had a list submitted to you that, a proposed list that Greg and members of the Recreation Board had, had compiled for things that they might, that they might want. They've even prioritized that list based on the projected revenue that we're talking the bond referendum to be. Some of those, quite frankly, are put on there, specifically the trails, based on council's desire to, to keep the trail projects alive, to match the grant, to use the matching portion of those grant funds that, that completes the two projects that are in line with our 2030 plan, the interconnecting trail. There's two items left for that, as well as improvements. And ADA, getting ADA compliant in a number of our parks and our, our restroom facilities and concession facilities and getting them updated.
Significant upgrades to Dellinger.
Significant upgrades, not only to Dellinger, but also to just about every little corner of, of, of where we're supposed to be. And again, it's, it's fixing up and it's maintaining. It's not necessarily buying new toys. It's, it's maintaining and what we do have with the exception of those trail projects. So this was a tool that we're using to, to let the voters decide what priority they want to put on, on recreation in our community. And I think it's, it is, it is the solution that we've come up with to try to determine whether or not we're going to be able to move forward with, with those projects and with getting, getting that done.
Question I have is, when, if approved, when's the earliest the funds will be available, Keith?
The earliest the funds would be available is, I believe we, we received payments on outdoor taxes from the county in, is it October or November, Tom?
It actually begins in September, October, November.
Okay.
And by the end of December.
So it would be September of 2015 through December of 2015 is when the payments would be coming in with respect to it on property taxes.
Well, actually, it would be, it would be when the bonds are issued.
Yeah, that's sort of, I would be questioning, when could you get the bond money at the earliest?
When would, when would?
Gabe, can I get you to stand forward to do that? Thank you.
Oh, now the bond money would be available by the end of this year.
Yeah, if the, the bond money, once, you know, the voters approve the referendum, November fourth, we have to get the bonds validated, you know, the courts here and of course get them prepared to sell, probably usually about two months. So I'd say late December, you know, end of the year at the earliest, early 2015. So about two months from November fourth.
When do we need the trail money by, Greg?
The lead date is December for, for paying for early maintenance charges. But we wouldn't need actual money at that time.
Okay. We haven't needed any so far, right?
Realistically, the money would probably be funded sometime between December 15th and December 22nd.
Yeah.
The full amount would be funded at that time.
You can always issue up to 8.2. You have to issue the maximum.
Yeah.
Some of the projects come in under budget. You always have the option to, to do a lower amount, but you can't issue more than 8.2 million dollars if you own a referendum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I guess where I was going with, with the, relative to the project list and from this point forward, if it's approved, much like when there's a splosh or any other kind of initiative in the community, that's, there would be a group forum that might want to help in its passage. If that were the case, then they would be the ones that would be doing, kind of serving the marketing. But it would come from community volunteers or some organization. It wouldn't be originated from the City of Carterville. It's not, not the way to go.
Nor the Recreation Board.
Right.
But I guess my follow-up question with, with Keith is, so what, a little more than $8 million, all the projects aren't going to be happening all at the same time. I mean, we would have, you know, over a time period, where does that money sit and we get to spend the interest that we gain on that money?
It's actually governed by arbitrage.
Yeah. I'd let, if Tom wants, he could actually address where they would keep it and everything.
Would it have to park those funds into a separate checking account and any interest that has earned on it would be spent subsequently?
Yeah. It's actually, it's, it's, it's 8.2 million on the issue, but there are issuance costs, so it's really a little bit less than $8 million.
Gotcha.
And Greg, when is your cutoff for having the confirmation?
Well, when we do, by the lead date in, in December, we'd be, we'd be, we'd be okay with that kind of way to continue the project or we're dropping the project.
Well, I think this is great and I hope November fourth, everybody gets out and expresses their opinion. I think that's what the council wants, to see where everybody stands on this. With that being said, I, I make a motion to approve this to be on the November fourth ballot.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chief Culpepper, you have the next item, please, sir.
Mayor, members of the council, this time every year, we come to you asking for authorization to make payment to the USA Software Incorporated. This is the vendor that provides maintenance and support to our records, our primary records management system and it is time to renew that contract with them in the amount of $28,876.30 and this is a budgeted item.
Any questions for the chief? And if there are any, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve, second.
Sure. I got a motion by, by Ms. Hodg and a second by Mr. Tom Smyer. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Dan, you have the next two items, please.
Yes, mayor and council. This first item is a fiber optics fusion splicer. We are needing to replace our 1996 model that we've had for almost 18 years. Cost of this new one is budget item. It's $13,142.66. That is a state contract price from Gray Bar.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Continue on.
The next item is a web filter for our computer software and servers to make sure we keep out spam. The cost of this is $13,997. This is a budget item as well.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Hampton, you've got the next item, please.
Thank you, mayor and council. What we've submitted for approval is a contract with Trees Unlimited to do right-of-way clearing or we call it tree trimming over all the lines in the city. They were one of three prices we got. They were not the lowest. They were 60 cents per crew hour, more expensive, but they are local and it only amounted to a $665 difference over the life of the, the contract. We've been working with them for eight years out of Cave Springs. Very few complaints with them. They're a good company to us. They do a really good job. We've gotten many compliments on them, so we recommend that this contract would be approved.
Any questions or discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve the contract with Trees Unlimited.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Derek. Mr. Forsythe, you've got the next one.
Yes, mayor and council. This is a request for approval for a replacement maintenance truck for the water pollution control plant. We're currently using a 30-year-old truck that's become a hazard to drive, even though it only gets about 30 miles per week put on it, which is why we're asking to replace it with a used truck. We have a 2000 GMC, which already has the bed that we require on it with tool bins and things like that, which is about a $5,000 expense should we have to put that on ourselves. We are requesting to purchase this from Mr. Don Jackson here in town for $12,500. It is a budgeted item.
Questions on this item? If not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sidney. Before we get to the finance report, do want to add one item to the agenda. Chair, will you entertain a motion to add that item?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Item is added. Mr. Lovell.
Yes, mayor. We received an anti-item notice from Andrew Jones regarding an accident involving Malia Daleis, Malia Lewis. After investigation, it is recommended that the city deny this claim at this time and this resolution does so.
Okay. Chair, will you entertain a discussion or a motion?
Motion to deny.
Wait a second.
I'll make a motion that we add.
Okay.
Just, just so that we're clear.
Motion to approve or deny.
Or you may, exactly, I want to make sure that the warning is right. Your motion is to approve the anti-item notice or to deny the anti-item notice?
Approve the anti-item notice.
We have a motion to approve the anti-item notice. Do I have a second? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. I think we did the right thing there. All right. Now for the monthly financial report. Tom?
Honorable mayor and council, we'll be looking at the May 2014 and comparing it to May 2013. In the general fund, revenues increased a little over $1 million since last May. Expenses have increased 1.4 million. This is due to increased personnel operating and the payment of the TANs from December of 2012. In three areas of revenue that I look at are the local often sales tax, increase of $78,000, police fines and forfeitures. I'm sorry, that was a decrease of $78,000. Police fines and forfeitures have a decrease of $102,000 and billing permits and inspections have an increase of roughly $26,000. Water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last year by $573,000. Expenses increased by $3.6 million. This is due to, largely due to the increase in capital expenses. If you remember, in 2012, we had a bond issue that were to cover some future capital projects. Those funds are now being used to fund these, even though they're coming out as expenses. And this year, we planned the revenue in 2012. In gas fund, revenues increased over last year by $3.5 million. Expenses have increased by $4.5 million. This is due to increase in personnel expenses, operating expenses, and purchased gas and capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased by $414,000. Expenses decreased by $120,000. This is due to increased personnel, operating, and capital expenses, coupled with increased cost of purchasing electricity. In the storm water, revenues decreased from last year by $72,000. Expenses decreased by $298,000. This is due to increased operating expenses offset, I'm sorry, this is due to increased operating expenses offset by decreased personnel and capital expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues decreased from last year by $166,000. And expenses decreased by $13,000. This is due mainly to increased personnel expenses offset by decreased operating and capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last year by $145,000. Expenses decreased by $53,000. This is due mainly to a large decrease in capital expenses, coupled with increased in personal, personnel and operating expenses. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, okay.
Water sewer fund, let me make sure I understand this correctly. You mean the bond money is being run through the expenses incurred?
Yes.
Okay.
If you remember, in 2012, we claimed those, those bond issue funds and, as revenue in 2012. And we can't claim those again in 2014 when we were actually using them. But they, but on the expense side, the expenses are now hidden.
The money's actually set aside and that's covered. So that's blowing up the deficit of water. And it also hit the, if I may, it hit the short, the unrestricted cash. And Tom shared with me that in June, which is not reflected in these numbers, $3 million was moved across to, to replenish the unrestricted cash. It was a transfer between restricted and unrestricted. So those are, those are overstated at this point.
So what is the deficit for the water department then?
It is approximately a little over $500,000, like $543,000, $544,000.
All things equal, you don't know what's going to happen between, I mean, these are obviously old. Next month, you'll be looking at June and, I mean, we're assuming everything's equal and sometimes things are pretty fluid, so.
And again, this is done on cash basis. End of year changes everything because we will go and make transfers to move capital out into fixed assets.
Okay. Any questions for Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sidney, if I, if I may, put you on the spot. Hopefully, this won't be a big deal. If you could just kind of let the public know about what's...
Water outage on the, on the 24-inch that, yeah, you could please.
Thank you.
There's a relatively small leak on the 24-inch main, which goes out Old Mill Road and serves, for the most part, the western part of the county, but as far as...
Our estimates at this point is that it will be below $5,000, so it doesn't need your approval, but we wanted to make sure that you knew about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sidney.
Is there any other business that needs to come forward, council, this evening?
Mayor, just a reminder that Tuesday is election day, and there are runoffs that our citizens can vote.
Absolutely. Seven to seven.
Seven to seven.
Thank you, Diane. Any other business? Chairman, I'm taking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I did not get a, he missed his gavel. My way to Walker Street.
I didn't want to-